Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, at six P. M. The atomic clock is six P. M. I'm not sure what's wrong with our clocks in here, but it is six. Uh, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would stand for that, please, and followed by the invocation, Father Tom Jones with the Church of the Holy Spirit is here, and they're at thirteen oh five Thomas Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Give our city council members discerning hearts as they listen to those who offer witness about the issues at hand. And enable those who approach the councils to state clearly their thoughts and concerns, so that our council may fully understand and properly assess the community impact of the options before them. Guide our council to make wise decisions in the work they do this day, that the choices they make are made with right intentions, with a mind towards the proper stewardship of public resources they have been entrusted with, and in the best interest of those they serve. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city is more important than our differences, so that working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey, and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord, bless all those who gather in this place, that all may know your love and grace, and knowing it, embrace it, share it, and let it be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Thank you, Father Jones. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports, five A. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is special presentation. Seven A is a jewel of Bellevue. Um, the mayor gets to award this jewel, uh, to those that he feels is, uh, deserving of it. Um, and I don't see Don Fenster in the audience. I did present this to him at a retirement ceremony. Don retired from the Bridge Commission. Um, after twenty-four years of serving on the Bridge Commission. He also served on the Sarpy County Planning Commission for fourteen, let's see, fourteen years, and the Bellevue Planning Commission for eight years. He also mentored fourteen young men with the, uh, Tom Osborne Teammates Program. Um, so this is just a, uh, I think it's a very worthy recognition of, uh, Mr. Fenster. Um, he's, uh, he's one of those citizens that, uh, makes our community stronger, uh, when people give their time and, and don't expect pay for it. Um, that it's just an awesome, uh, awesome award to get. Uh, the award itself is the Jewel of Bellevue, and it says, Don Fenster, thank you for your twenty-four years of dedicated service to the city of Bellevue and its citizens. Um, presented by me, September two thousand twenty-two. So, uh, thanks, Don, for your service, if you're listening at home. Uh, organizational matters, number eight, we do not have any this evening. Number nine, approved citizen communication. Nine A, concerning possible solutions for safety issues regarding street traffic in the Nob Hill neighborhood. Uh, Steve Spurgeon, two zero zero six Virginia Avenue. Um, he put in a request to be heard, so, uh, see him here.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, city council members, for allowing me to speak today.
And then give you, uh, state your name and address.
My name is Steve Spurgeon, and I live at two zero zero six Virginia Avenue.
And then sign in before you leave, but you can go ahead and talk. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to bring.
We got five, five minutes, sorry.
Well, let me, let me take those minutes.
All right.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring what I feel is the most important issue in Bellevue, and that's the safety of the children. I've lived in the, in Bellevue and in the neighborhood that I live in for forty-five years. In that time, I've seen two kids get killed by cars, and we've had two kids, just in the last seventy days, get hit by vehicles. We've addressed the city council in the past and asked that there be a speed bump or some type of traffic calming device be put in our neighborhood, and we have been informed that because it is a through fare, that there's nothing that can be done. Now, I have friends and family that live in the Omaha area, and I don't know if you're familiar with, uh, the West Dodge Highway. You get off on Hundred Forty-fourth Street, and those neighborhoods, the first thing you come to is a speed bump to stop, to let people know that this is a neighborhood, and that we have to be aware of the children in the neighborhood. Now, I understand there's been some, uh, some traffic, uh, some studies done, but the police have been in our neighborhood, and that they've pulled no one over, and no one's speeding, and you have one of those speed machines that's checking the speed, but, you know, in our neighborhood, kids are just being kids. They're gonna play in the street, they're gonna ride their bikes, they're gonna play ball, they're gonna learn how. I've taught kids to ride the bike in the middle of the street, and I don't have any kids anymore in the neighborhood that's at that age. My kids are all in their early to late twenties. But as long as I've been in the neighborhood, I know all the kids, and I love them just as much if they were my own children. So regardless if the people are speeding through the neighborhood, which they do, we need to do something in that neighborhood to make people aware that this is a neighborhood. There are people who live in this neighborhood with kids, and in the forty-five years that I've lived there, I have never seen as many elementary school-aged kids in our neighborhood. And with cell phones and traffic coming from Fort Crook Road with a car wash, people coming down off Bellevue Boulevard trying to get to Fort Crook Road. This is not something that may happen again. It's going to happen again. And once again, we've come to the city council before, and we've asked that something be done, and nothing's been done but excuses. I've talked to a member of the city council in the last two months. That person came to my neighborhood and sat in a vehicle and spoke with me and said they would get back with me. Thirty days goes by, no response. I'd make a phone call to their cellphone and leave a message. A week goes by, no response. I make another cellphone call to their cellphone. A week goes by, and no response. If you care about Bellevue, you care about the children in this, in this city first. If you don't do anything in this neighborhood to, to make people aware that this is a neighborhood, and to try to make the kids safe, then I don't even know what you're doing on the council. So that's all I have to say about it, and I will be following up. If I have to come and talk to the city council every single month until you get something done in the Nob Hill area, and I would like to see speed bumps and a four-way stop sign at the corner of Virginia and Fourth Street with signs that warn people there's a stop sign ahead coming at Virginia Avenue, and the same coming around Third Street, that will at least make people aware that there are kids in this neighborhood. I don't have to, I'm not trying to get to where I'm trying to get to. I am trying to make sure that I get through this neighborhood safely, not for my sake, but for the sake of the children in my neighborhood. So I would appreciate it if you would take this matter more seriously this time and do something about it. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you for speaking. I would just like to, um, state, I mean, I don't think there's a council member up here that does not love our children and, and put them first in this community, so. I would, uh, ask, I know there's some council members that have some questions, but I'd like, uh, Chief Clary to maybe come forward and address some of those issues or some of the studies he's done in that area.
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor. Um, Ken Clary, the police chief here in Bellevue. Was actually made aware of the complaints in that neighborhood about two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago, by third-hand information. Um, to my knowledge, checking with everyone in the department, we've never received a complaint about Nob Hill, uh, traffic in, around that neighborhood, speeding or otherwise. Um, we were unable to locate any documented, documented complaints. So it was a little bit disturbing when I did see the complaints come through on social media, that, uh, there was a call to action to the council. Uh, I did take that opportunity as a third-hand complaint to go ahead and start action, as we would with any complaint. Two years ago, just a little over two years ago, I arrived at the department. Basically, any complaint that comes in, in a formal capacity throughout the city, we put on a list for, um, our unobligated time. We, in the city, we have, uh, a little over a hundred officers. Uh, we have about forty-six thousand calls for service. So a lot of our time is dedicated to going to calls, but there is some unobligated time that we can utilize for traffic enforcement. Uh, and we do target those efforts with the complaints that come in, so we put it on our list, uh, to go, um, check those areas during the unobligated times of officers. Uh, if you have this sheet, on the overhead, um, you'll see the results of our selective traffic enforcement, which is where those officers go into that neighborhood whenever they have free time. Uh, during a two-week time period, uh, from September seventh to September eighteenth, uh, it looks like on about, uh, ten or twelve, uh, opportu- uh, ten or twelve different, uh, time periods throughout the day and night, officers went to that location, wandered around those neighborhoods, spent a little over, or just a little under six hours of traffic enforcement time in those neighborhoods. You'll see some notes off on the right-hand side, um, basically noting the reasons that they left. There were no cars stopped that, it doesn't, that doesn't mean there wasn't traffic. It just means there wasn't, there were no incidents where an officer deemed that the safety of the vehicle was such that it would have been stopped. There are notes on the right-hand side that say, no violations observed, very low traffic, very low traffic, very low traffic, multiple times over, no violations observed. On the nineteenth, we did poll this, um, selective enforcement, because the number one complaint to the police department is speeding. Um, there are a number of different areas that we concentrate on, um, kind of bounce around, make our presence known. Um, so, again, on the nineteenth, we polled that one from our selective enforcement. However, half of the time period that that selective enforcement was going on, the second half of it, we did place a speed trailer out there to try to determine speeds of the traffic through the neighborhood. To my knowledge, I believe that speed trailer is still there. Uh, the direction of the speed trailer will be changed tomorrow, after I spoke with um, the officers today. Um, if you go back to the other slides, these are our numbers, and I know it's a little convoluted. Um, but the page on the left shows the number of vehicles that traveled through by that, um, sign in a one-week period. There were just under three thousand vehicles traveling through there. Um, along the top are the speeds by category in five mile-per-hour segments. Um, difficult to read there, so I'll break it down. Three of the three thousand vehicles were traveling at eleven to fifteen miles an hour over the speed limit, so point one percent. Five percent were going between five, six and ten miles an hour over. Ninety-four percent of the vehicles traveling through that neighborhood were traveling at or below the speed limit. Again, um, oftentimes, people will say, well, that's a, a speed sign that shows your, your speeds, so it's going to, it is designed as a traffic calming device, and it is. However, when we put our hidden black box up, um, and record speeds in that way, almost always, they're extremely similar to the speeds that we get, um, with these, with the, uh, speed trailer that notes speed. So, um, to date, again, in the last two years, doing some research, unaware of any complaints that have come in, I'm unaware. I did some research looking for the two children that were hit within the last seventy days. I'm unaware of those incidents. Uh, I am aware in two thousand nineteen of the death. Um, that driver was not cited in that incident. It was tragic, but, um, that was a skateboard incident where a nine-year-old was killed, unfortunately. But again, fault was not placed on the driver there. I guess my words to anyone listening today would be, if you have issue in your neighborhood where you believe you have a speed problem, call the police department, make a complaint. We do have a formal way that we deal with that. We will send officers out. We will make our presence known. We will do everything we can to track those speed, and we will try to make a difference, because safety of all of our citizens, not just our children, is a priority. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Good. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate having that perspective, because I, as all of us would, share Mr. Spurgeon's concern about children and their safety and traffic, as you do. So it's very disturbing to hear some of the things that he said. He mentioned two deaths and two other injuries recently. You mentioned, uh, that you couldn't find a, a report on those, but only mentioned one death. Uh, that's all that you were able to?
Yeah, there's, in speaking with people who've been in my department for a long time, they vaguely remember a death years ago. Many years ago. The only one that we have, our traffic's, um, uh, what do I want to call it? Uh, it's called Trax. It's a traffic incident management system, um, where we put in all of our citations and all of our crash reports. Isn't that old, so we can't search that way very easily, but we do have record of that one incident in September, I believe it was September nineteenth in two thousand nineteen, or September twentieth, two thousand nineteen, right in that time period, Caleb's incident. But, um, other than that, I don't, I don't know what incidences you're referring to in the last seventy days. I'd be glad to, you know, hear more about those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I, I used to live up in that neighborhood, and I think, I drove through it the other day, and I think something that sort of bothers me with that neighborhood is, is the street, I should say. The neighborhood's a nice neighborhood. But what I noticed, and even when I lived there, what I've noticed is, for whatever reason, that street, there's a lot of one-car garage homes, and that forces a lot of people to park on the street. And I can recall living in that neighborhood, going up and down that street a million times, where it was just solid cars on the south side. And so if something was coming at you, you'd have to, like, dip into where someone would turn into the driveway. And I don't know if that plays a part in this. Um, looking at these speeds, and I agree, um, with my, with a background in law enforcement also, I know people say, well, you got a speed trailer out there, so everybody slows down. Well, just the opposite happens sometimes, because people want to see how fast they can get going. I, I think they're very, very valuable information. When I look at these, and you look at a lot of speeds under twenty-five miles an hour, a lot, like you said, ninety-four or at or below percentage of them. But what, what, what just draws my attention on that particular street, and it is a cut-through street. People from the Boulevard, people from Fort Crook wanted zigzag through that neighborhood to get home or get out on Fort Crook and get, get to work. It just seems like it's a tight street with a lot of parked cars, because with a single-car driveway, you know, you're not gonna put your car in the driveway and have three cars parked behind it, and then when that car has to leave in the morning, everybody jump out and start moving cars and reshuffling cars at six o'clock in the morning. So I don't know if anything can be addressed in that sense. I, I, to me, it just seems like it's a narrow, tight street, and I think it's because of the vehicles parked. And sometimes, I, I can remember from Nob Hill, and you're gonna have to help me, where I think that Mr. Spurgeon said Fourth Street. I've seen that where the street parking was just solid cars, except where driveways were at.
Yeah, I, I did have a conversation with, uh, Councilman McCaw before the council meeting. We did talk about that. There oftentimes, there are a lot of spaces in the driveways that aren't utilized. They're parking on the street. Um, the majority of the pedestrian crashes that we have in the street are people coming out from between cars. They're not seen until the last second. So the problem is, often ti- oftentimes, the first thing people want to do, and I think, uh, City Administrator Risto would speak to this, is the knee-jerk reaction is speed bumps. You know, that is the immediate, we need speed bumps. Problem is, I've actually done a lot of reading, scholarly articles on speed bumps, and speed bumps actually slow response time for emergency services, so they can cause more problems for people, the fire department, ambulances responding to emergencies, transporting to hospitals. So we have to be careful that there is an issue that we're actually addressing before we put speed bumps in. Um, they can also, it's noted that they do cause more crashes, especially on narrow streets where you have a lot of, because they can cause people to lose control, um, especially if they're one-handed driving, like a lot of motoring public does. So there are a number of unintended consequences with speed bumps that people don't think about. They just think it's gonna slow traffic, which generally, they do slightly, not as much as people would think. Uh, but we gotta think about those things as well, and I think we need to do our due diligence in researching the areas before we would ever just put speed bumps out there because of those consequences.
I think the information you provided speaks loudly. I think the problem, and I'm no expert, I, I don't know if Mr. Spurgeon would agree or not, but I think my, my guess would be the problem is, it's just a tight road with a lot of vehicles, and you're right. Most kids are gonna get in trouble in a street or coming in, or coming through between vehicles. And it doesn't matter if you're going thirty-five or fifteen, if it's at that last second, they're gonna get hit. Um, I, I, I'm almost confident that maybe a block to the north, and maybe a little bit to the west, I'm not sure. I'm almost confident years ago, there was another fatality of a kid up somewhere in that neighborhood. I don't recall the exact situation, but the one in two thousand nineteen, I remember that, and I'm sure years before that. It might have been fifteen, twenty years before that. I'm almost positive there was another fatality.
That, that would be a timeframe that the recollection was of the other officers as well, but, you know, one thing that should be noted, um, I know, uh, Councilman Preister speaks to this a lot, but the availability of sidewalks is fairly decent in that neighborhood. I've driven that neighborhood numerous times and recently. So we, you know, there, there should be some onus. I realize kids will be kids, but, you know, we really need to do our due diligence to keep them on those sidewalks for those reasons. Um, because the crashes will occur at low speeds, and you're gonna do damage no matter you're going fifteen or thirty-five, so.
And when, again, when I lived up there, a lot of single-car garage, but some people have added a second driveway. You know, do you use them, do you not? Is it easier to just pull up, park in the street, go in the house, especially if maybe you're a teenager or a young kid going to college, but, that, that's, you know, when you, when you just would look over the last twenty, thirty years as far as kids getting hurt, I'd, I'd have to say that that particular area has had probably more than what we would normally see.
Just to follow, so, Mr. Spurgeon, and maybe after the meeting, or I'll follow up with you later, you talk about a stop sign for traffic. I mean, you got our attention. This is one thing that, when you talk about alerting the police or Public Works about a, a traffic issue, not to put this off, but this really got our attention a couple of weeks ago. First thing we do is we put our police department in to look at traffic. Our next step would be, if there, if there was a speed issue or a way for us to calm traffic in there, if a stop sign is appropriate, that's something Doug and I will work on separately, our Public Works Director. So we will take a look at that, see, is there a good spot for a stop sign or a, you know, whether it's a two-way or a four-way, but uh, I don't want you to walk out here thinking that we're gonna ignore that. Uh, we want to make sure that, you know, that we will look at that. Our, our first step was just looking at what our traffic count and what the speed limits are going through there.
Actually, actually, you can probably ask my question, but I'm gonna have you come forward. Uh, so we're being recorded, so you need to talk with, into the microphone? Just, if you want to come up and answer Jim's question.
The, when you had the, when you had the police officers in the neighborhood, I talked to a couple of them when they came in, and they were there at night, and during the time when the kids were in school, for the most part. So those times, I, you know, the traffic may not be speeding through there, but there's no children at all during those times. Eight o'clock in the morning, two in the afternoon, twelve in the afternoon, eight o'clock at night. Those aren't times that any kids would, would be out there playing. So I don't see how that is relevant other than to see if there's any speeders going through the neighborhood.
Okay, we're not, uh, as Jim said, we're not done looking into it, so.
Okay, well, I just, that, that was my observation.
Yep, thank you.
Looking at that study.
Thank you.
Don't, don't go anywhere.
Just one quick, go ahead, Councilwoman Welch.
And, Mr. Spurgeon, um, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I am your city councilperson, and this is the first I'd heard of it from you specifically. I'm not sure which city councilperson you reached out to, but one of your other neighbors called me
Camilla.
about this, and I, um, made sure that I reached out to our city administrator, our chief of police, and that's where this whole ball started rolling.
I appreciate that.
And then, and then, once it was on social media, I made sure they had it again. So if there's an issue that a city councilperson needs to take care of, please reach out to me, because I am, I am your ward person.
I appreciate that, but again, this issue has been brought up before, and we have been no, we've been notified that it's a through fare, and there's nothing that could be done. So our, my confidence at the, up to this point, maybe, maybe it can, it can be changed, but I really have had no confidence in the city council to do anything, because the answers that we get is that there's nothing that you can do.
Understandably, your, your frustration, your concern, but this is a different administration. I've been in this seat four years. Mayor's been in this seat four years. We can't speak to what happened prior to four years ago. So this is a different administration that take, not that the last administration didn't take it seriously, but we take it very seriously, because we want to take care of this.
I do too. I lived there forty-five years, so again, I take it more seriously than you do. I can guarantee you that.
And I can appreciate that, but I also know that that was a, an area that I grew up with. with as a kid. All of my friends lived in Nob Hill.
Well, I can understand, you may be frustrated that I didn't reach out to you, but that's just, that's the situation.
Well, part of it is, if you can reach out to me as your city council person, and anyone else in the neighborhood, because we've also had concerns with the Bellevue Boulevard, they've reached out to me, and then we were able to contact Mr. Risto, Chief Clary, and get some things taken care of in their area, and continue to stay on that. So we can't, I can't fix what I don't know is happening. So just what I would say, you've got Mr. Risto's attention. I have all faith that he will, he and the mayor will get it, and the chief will get it taken care of, but for some reason they don't, please let me know so we can address this.
And one other observation from the chief's statement here about the sidewalks in the neighborhood, and the onus on the parents to keep their kids on the sidewalk. I mean, that's not much of a, that's not much, much counsel to a, a parent whose kid gets hit by a car, to say, hey, well, you need to keep your kid on the sidewalk. Kids are gonna be kids. Kids are gonna ride their bikes in the street. Kids are gonna come out, like you said. That is a big issue. The car's on the street. So we need, maybe if you don't want speed bumps, I believe a four-way stop sign with a sign letting people know that there's a stop sign ahead would at least make them aware. Because I'm not pointing the finger at anybody and say, you, or you, or you, because I live in the neighborhood, and I find myself sometimes going a little faster in that neighborhood, and having to remind myself, Steve, you need to slow down. So we need some reminders for all traffic going through there to slow down. And I think the best, if we're not gonna have a, a speed bump, and again, I don't know the studies of speed bumps and how, what kind of issues they cause in a neighborhood, but I do know a stop sign makes people stop. And so if you have a four-way stop sign right there on the corner of North Fourth and Virginia Avenue, and signs coming around Third Street and down Virginia Avenue, warning people that there's stop signs ahead, then they will be more, they will have that on their mind that, hey, I need to slow down because I'm gonna have to stop, so.
We hope so. You know, the, the, you know.
Well, to not do it.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disregarding, disrespecting anything you say. What I'm just offering is, this has been brought to our attention. We're going to look at it, evaluate it, and figure out what's gonna be the best solution to this particular situation. And we appreciate you bringing it to our attention. We're just asking, bring it to our attention so that we can address it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Chief, first time I heard of this was on social media, which I've never heard of a problem in Nob Hill. I actually lived around the corner from Paul and Alberta for six or seven years. I never remember any problems. I do know that it was congested on, on the street, because the cars do park out there, but to me, that's kind of a calming device. I mean, it wouldn't want to take traffic, cars away, because that does slow you down.
Yeah.
As well, and I think his, his remark regarding sidewalks was, we just got a lot of areas that have bad sidewalks around Bellevue, or, or no sidewalks, so that's all the chief was referring to. We can't look at the sidewalks to make it safer, because they're already there, so.
Just a note, the graph on the right there, the lower half of that page is the time of day for the traffic flow. You'll see from seven to eight, which would be when kids are going to school, it only accounts for about two and a half percent of the traffic. So the morning really isn't so much of the issue as the afternoon, for whatever reason. Just to, to note, and then it was mentioned that we're there at times when the kids wouldn't be out. Six of the eleven, what do I say, it's times that officers spent time in the neighborhoods were Saturdays and Sundays, when kids would be out and about. So over half the allocated time was actually on weekends that they were out there, so. And some of that we can't control, it's just when their obligated time comes around, so.
Now, we, just observation for what's been said, I, we do get speeding complaints all over the city. These numbers, do they look any different to you than other areas? Are they all pretty generalized?
You know, honestly, I appreciate the concern. I do. I appreciate the passion. Similar complaints come in from part, other parts of the city with similar passion. I will tell you, the majority of the time that we go out and spend time, speed can be deceiving. If you're not practiced at guessing speeds, especially if you're standing back and watching traffic go by at a distance, or you're watching vehicles come around a curve, they appear much faster than they actually are going. It's not until you are out there on the same plane with them, pointing a radar at them, that you know the exact speed. I see Councilman Cook nodding his head. It's, it's one of those things, it's just physics. It's, it's visual optical illusion. That doesn't mean it's not dangerous. You know, thirty miles an hour seems really fast when you're standing still and they're coming around a curve at you. So to answer your question, these numbers really aren't that different than when we receive complaints in other areas, generally, I don't want to downplay people's concerns, but generally, their perception is worse than what the actual problem is. There are rare occasions where that's different, but we will target, whenever we get the complaints in, we'll target our efforts in those areas.
And three years ago, when I was starting to hear some complaints about speeding, I mean, my thoughts were, hey, throw a stop sign up there, that'll slow it down, but when you realize all the different areas around town, you'd have a stop sign at every other corner, you'd have speed bumps all over, it's just not conducive to, to traffic, so we have to find other, generally have to find other ways to, to handle that, so.
And again, I, I appreciate the fact that there is a concern for the, the data. Let's look at the data and, and identify the true problems, and then come up with the best solution for them, so.
Any other questions for the chief? Councilman Burns?
Chief Clary, could you, because I know a lot of times, we oftentimes think about like just a speed bump as traffic calming. Could you maybe educate us a little bit on like maybe the different types of traffic calming devices, just real briefly? And then, I thought that the city, I thought we had like tiers, so like there was like a tier one and tier two as to whether or not like we could put a, some kind of traffic calming device, meaning like there are certain criteria, so I thought there was a process where neighbors could actually petition, and then bring it to the city to, and then I think speed, I thought amount of traffic, and then depending on which tier you're in, I, I think I had like a similar complaint a long time ago and kind of took people through the process. I don't know if that still exists, and then I was just gonna ask about stop signs. Are there any state and federal guidelines on like how many stop signs you can and can't have in? The reason that I ask is, is just because I know everybody's talking about stop sign and, I don't, I don't know if, if that's the case or not, and.
I don't know, I'm the best person to answer your last question about the state regulations on placement of stop signs. I think the city council has a lot of leeway in that area, but I don't know the exact parameters of the state law in that area. I can speak to speed calming devices a little bit. I have been reading up on them. I'd be glad to share some of the scholarly articles if you don't mind wading through them. But, you know, they're verticals, speed calming devices like speed bumps. There are also horizontal speed calming devices like roundabouts. Those are more expensive, because you're widening roads, you're taking away property. Both are effective in different ways. There are speed calming devices like signs that display, permanent signs that display your speed. Generally speaking, they're effective for a limited time. It diffuses over time, so effective right up front, and then people become accustomed to them. Majority, I think Mr. Spurgeon even spoke to this a little bit, admitting to speeding in his own neighborhood, that, I'm not faulting him for that. He's admitting to something that the vast majority of people do. I would argue if we had license plate readers up there, the majority of the speed are local there, because it is a fairly closed neighborhood. There are some through traffic, especially due to the road construction, et cetera, but, you know, the first thing is getting our local people in those neighborhoods to obey the speed limit. Oftentimes, when we send our officers in to do these speed checks, the first people they're stopping are the people that are actually living there. So I know that only briefly touches on, on speed calming devices, but all of them have an upside a little bit, and some of them have a big downside, and some of them have smaller downsides. But again, it's, you know, what's effective over time in that particular area? You know, stop sign technically speaking isn't a traffic calming device. It's just traffic control device, which makes people stop. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, it does, and the reason that I ask is, is just, I mean, if there's, like I understand speed bumps too, but I mean, if there's other avenues that we can also explore and other possible solutions, you know what I mean? I mean, clearly not a roundabout in neighborhood, but, you know, like I suppose I would consider a stop sign, yes, a traffic calming device, or any kind of signage, and that's why I was asking, just to see if, you know, we could explore any and all avenues with it.
There, there are a number of things. I mean, you can cut grooves into pavement, that becomes an issue as well. You know, just a number of different things, honestly. Before we do any of them, again, I come back to taking a look in depth over time at the issue to make sure it is an issue. I'm not saying it's not, but our initial snapshot makes it appear as though it's not. We can come back over time, put the black box up so it can't be seen. We can measure the traffic in that way. We can send officers back in different times of day, target it that way. If it is seen as a, as a true issue, then we should start talking about those things.
Isn't there, isn't there also the possibility, Doug, and maybe that might be something we look into, that you see those, as you're coming down the street, there's a flashing one that says, slow down, children at play, or something to that effect, that brings it to people's attention that, hey, you're going too fast, slow it down, and it only trips when they're speeding. Just a thought.
There, there are those devices, speaking on behalf of Doug. Those devices exist, but again, they diffuse over time, the effectiveness of them. Initially, you'll get a marked decrease, but over time, those things diffuse, because people can become accustomed to them. That's a difficulty with a lot of those speed calming devices, is they just diffuse over time. People start ignoring them, so, if they can, unless you're making them hit their head on the ceiling of their car, and crashing into, you know, oncoming traffic. I say that in jest, I shouldn't. I apologize.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, chief.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, for bringing it to everybody's attention. I just appreciate everybody's patience and the council's input, because this is educational for all neighborhoods across the city, not just, not just Nob Hill, so hopefully it helps people understand the issue a little bit better. Okay, moving on to item ten, liquor licenses. Ten A, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Jonathan Milham as the new manager for Come and Go LLC, doing business as Come and Go three, seven, three, at three, one, three, nine, oh, five, Williamsburg Drive. And I will open it up, ten A, for public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak, are you the applicant?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, if you have anything to say, you can, or just stick around for questions.
Yep, I'm just here for, for questions, so thank you for having us tonight.
Okay, what's your name?
John Mylon.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding ten A, the approval for liquor license? I'll close the public hearing, and do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Make sure I'm on the right one. Ten A?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application of Jonathan E. Milham as a new manager of Come and Go LLC, Come and Go three, seven, three, at one, thirty, nine, oh, five, Williamsburg Drive.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, on ten A. Is there any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm gonna do this verbally. For some reason, it's not letting me. Casey?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
McCaw?
Yes.
Preister?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Go on to ten B, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Casey's Retail Company, doing business as Casey's six, one, three, three, for a Class D liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits, off sale only, at three, zero, zero, three Sampson Way, Bellevue, and for Crystal Carter as manager. And I'll open up that for a public hearing. Anyone here to speak, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Randy Olivet, district manager with Casey's.
Okay, just here for questions?
Just here for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody who wants to speak regarding ten B? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And entertain a motion. Councilman Casey?
Mayor, I'll make a recommendation, our motion for the recommendation approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission, the application of Casey's Retail Company, no relation to me, by the way, Casey's six, one, three, three, for a Class C liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits, off sale only, at three, zero, zero, three Sampson Way, Bellevue, and for Crystal Carter as manager.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Welch. Any comments or questions on ten B? Please vote.
Did it go through? We'll do that one verbally too. Casey?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
McCaw?
Yes.
Preister?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten C, recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the application for Elevated Aspect LLC, doing business as Elevated Coffee Company and Tap House, for a Class C liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits, on and off sale at two, eight, five, one, Capeport Road, Bay F through G, Bellevue, and Nicholas J. Sosek as manager. And I'll open ten C up for public hearing. If there's anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding ten C? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, LLC, to approve the application for Elevated Aspect LLC, doing business as Elevated Coffee Company and Tap House, for a Class C liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits, on and off sale, at twenty, eight, fifty, one, Capeport Road, Bay F and G, Bellevue, and Nicholas J. Sosek as manager.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions on ten C? Please vote.
Try it again.
Yes.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, and I'm gonna jump back real quick to seven, special presentation, seven A, The Jewel of Bellevue. I noticed that Dr. Fenster and his son David walked in. I think Don's been around the city so long, maybe he thought the city's council meeting still started at seven o'clock. But if you come up to the podium, I presented, and just to recap, Don has been, and I, I talked real well, you should go back and listen to this YouTube video. But again, Don served twenty-four years on the Bridge Commission, eight years on the Bellevue Planning Commission, fourteen years on the Sarpy County Planning Commission. He mentored fourteen young men with the teammates program that Tom Osborne started. So again, outstanding citizen, we're real proud of him and all the work he's done for Bellevue, and never expected anything out of it. So if you come forward, we'll grab a couple pictures.
I have to apologize for being late. I just thought I was.
You're good. No problem.
Okay.
We'll get it improvising, so. And I told him, I presented this the other night, so, but I just wanted to officially do it, because these are pretty important to me to pass out.
Very important to me, too.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
If you want to say anything, you're welcome to.
I guess the thing I'd like to say most is thank you for the mayor presenting me with this award, but I'd also like to thank the people on the city council for taking the time out of your life to be on the city council. I know from being on a planning commission for a long time that when you do. When you do something that people agree with, you never hear from them. But the minute you do something they disagree with, your phone rings off the wall. So I commend the city council for your tolerance and I also thank you very much for your service and I thank the mayor for his service. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll get back on the agenda. Item twelve, actually eleven ordinances for adoption. We have none for third reading this evening. Item twelve. Ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four, one, zero, seven was withdrawn by the applicant. So we'll move on to twelve B, ordinance number four, one, zero, eight. Request to amend section five dot two, three, City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding permitted uses in the BGM. Zoning District Regarding Multi-Family Residential Density. Applicant is Alex Perry. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four, one, zero, eight, an ordinance to amend section five point two, three. Ordinance number forty-one, oh, four, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to allowable. Multi-family residential density in the BGM Metropolitan General Business District. To repeal such sections as heretofore existing to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you, and I will open up the public hearing for twelve B. Uh, if the applicant wants to say anything, I believe they're in the audience. And, uh, if anybody in the public wants to speak, please, uh, follow him. Please state your name, address.
Jeff Gearing, uh, forty-two, twenty-two Davenport in Omaha.
The applicant shows as Alex Perry, but Jeff is a partner with Alex on this project.
I want to thank, uh, the mayor and members of the city council here, uh, for considering this text amendment. Uh, as many of you know, I stood before you the last meeting and, uh, uh, for the redevelopment agreement on the, uh, for the. Uh, bridge, uh, flats and for the frontier district. So I thank you for all that. And we're very excited to get underway. We hope, uh, in the next month or two, we'll have that before Tammy and the rest of her crew here. Uh, we don't think starting Friday or probably next week, so really excited about that. Uh, and you mentioned Alex Perry. He and I have been, uh, partners on this. Along with some other, uh, great people. And we, one of the things we noticed when we looked at this, uh, development down there. It, for us to really look at this as a, what eventually to be a central business district is that. Uh, having a BGM just didn't allow enough density really for multi-units. Uh, one of the things we. We emp- we employed a national outfit called Nova Gratic. They did a study, a market study. And we found that when the fifty-three units were absorbed, uh, we, not to mention the ten units that I'm doing at Jefferson Place Town Homes and Nick McCright is doing on. Uh, the Franklin Street Town Homes, that were only fifty-one percent absorbed. Uh, what we, that was, that struck us because a year ago when we ran that same study, the absorption rate was higher. So it is not improving over time. What if that's telling us? And why we're seeing a lot of lack of retail down there is that there's a lot of need. Bellevue's growing a lot. And there's a lot of exciting things happening at Bellevue University, off at Air Force Base, the mixed-use. Commercial development, uh, industrial developments can bring high-paying jobs. So in order to make this sort of a central business district and attract the grocer that's very much needed. You know, take the load off of the quick shop up there and try to bring in restaurants that are desperately needed. That we at least need to, you know, increase this density another twenty-plus percent, uh, in order to accommodate that need. So that's why we have this for you, uh, before you to increase that density for the text amendment, so. Um, and then, of course, that really is commensurate with what we see in Omaha, so. If you have any questions, I, I invite that right now, otherwise. Thank you very much for.
Questions? Councilman Burns?
So, is the, so is this tied to the current project that you just announced then? Specifically, I mean, I know it's kind of for the area, but is that what I'm hearing you say?
It's a good question, Tom. I, I, um, it was a, it was a two-part process with that. One was what happens if we don't fulfill the seventeen. Eighteen thousand square foot retail and that's dangerous for us as a developer, so. Uh, as we come to find out now, since we did our press conference, that there's been a huge, huge outpouring support for that. Not only that, we've got a lot of prospects in there. But part of our concern was, and this was Perry Reed's concern, is that we need to at least, you know, separate some of that commercial space and put apartments on the main. Well, we already hit that density with the BGM, so in order to get a text amendment, that allowed us to at least have an insurance policy to add to it. But on a larger sense, to answer your larger question, this is really to open the door for other developers. And for the grocer and for a lot, and a lot of retailers that need to come down there. So. I think the, the, the better question is the latter part of that, so. But yes, yes to both, so.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I am hearing you correctly. So just in the off chance that anything. I'm trying to remember, you said commercial, restaurant, and retail, correct? All on the bottom floor that. If for some reason that doesn't pan out, that this would allow you to, um, convert that to apartments?
Part of it, six thousand square feet of it. So we would go to about eleven thousand square feet versus seventeen, eighteen thousand. So we convert the rear half of that into some one and two bedroom apartment units.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to just picture it, I'm sorry. So when you say the rear half and six thousand.
Southern portion of this, of this property would storefront, the mission side would remain as retail. And then we'll put a demising wall, kind of east to west there, and then the north-facing part of the building. On the first floor only, where we would add six to eight units, so that, and then they would park in the back, so. The, to buffer, to protect us if we didn't get all the retail leased up.
Okay, so does that mean, like, so in this, so like the first four units have to be like, uh, twenty-five? Let me make sure, twenty-five hundred square feet, so that would be, so like, this is what I'm thinking that you're saying is, is that like that. Front side, that storefront of Mission would still be probably like that square footage for any potential commercial and then. You, you would then on the backside. Make apartment complexes or convert that to apartment complexes. And then, do you guys know what that square footage would look like? Cause I know you're asking to go from eight hundred to six hundred, so that actually seems pretty small. I'm not like a master of. Square footage and trying to imagine what that looks like, but, you know, and then would it potentially, any of your other units? So when you're talking about top floors, would you potentially make those? Uh, I suppose smaller. So for example, like if you did have that development and you had four storefronts of twenty-five hundred square feet. Would this allow you and are you thinking that you would just kind of? Shorten up the square footage that you already have dedicated, like changing the plant, does that make sense?
This is a very good question, Tom. Yeah, I would, basically to answer your question, we won't change anything, floors two, three, and four, so that nothing would change there.
Okay.
So what we would do is add somewhere between six to eight units on the r- rear side of that first floor. Case we don't lease everything up. So on the front side, you'd have somewhere between five or six units that'll split up depending on what kind of. Retailers, uh, grocers, or whoever we get, uh, on that, the front-facing units. So they could be divvied up, uh, eleven thousand square feet divided by five units. So how, just depends on what we find, who we can get LOIs for. How we would divvy up the front leasing space for them.
Okay.
Hopefully, does that help a little bit?
A little bit. I mean, sometimes with the square footage, it's a little confusing. Actually, could you just maybe re-explain that one more time?
Yeah, so the front eleven, if, if we did bring the units down, you put a demising wall east to west. Put your six units of a combination of one and two bedroom units. Then on the, on the, what would be the south part or the front-facing portion of the bridge flats, you'll have five units in there.
Okay.
And they may be six, they may be seven, depending on what, what type of leases we come up with. And each one of those will range from, if that was smaller, it probably ranged from seven hundred square feet all the way up to. Three thousand square feet, and it would be double that if we used the whole space. And so. Uh, but we're finding that we probably won't do that, Tom. It's probably gonna use all seventeen thousand square feet, cause we're seeing a huge demand, so. We think that insurance policy won't be needed.
Okay, so, so this is just, uh, in the event that it's just an in case, so, and you're not actually planning on converting the whole thing to an. Just apartment complex?
No, no, absolutely not. There will, there will be retail in there. Absolutely.
I'm gonna let Tammy jump in, just I.
Thanks.
See if you can clear some of that up.
Sure, I might be able to provide some clarification. So a couple things, um, with Mr. Gearing's specific project, um. You guys approved a redevelopment plan, um, at one of your last city council meetings, so. That redevelopment plan was specific to what he was showing you at that time. So if there were to be any changes in that. That would come back through city council and an amendment to that redevelopment plan, so. Um, any changes to that first floor retail, if they were to be converted into multifamily spaces. That's something that would have to be addressed in an amended redevelopment plan. So there's a little bit extra piece of the puzzle to this specific development. As far as the text amendment goes, um, the proposed text amendment. Refers to when we say eight hundred square feet, six hundred square feet, that refers to the lot area. So the density of the apartments is based on the size of the property. So. In the RG eight zoning district, um, which is what the BGM refers to. You have to have at least ten thousand square feet of lot area in order to have four units. This amendment wouldn't change that. So the first four units would still have to have ten thousand square feet of lot area. Beyond those first four units, this text amendment proposes that it would reduce down to six hundred square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. But only if that, um, all of the necessary infrastructure is available as determined by city staff. So, um, you know, that's something planning, public works, um, wastewater would have to look at. That density would only be allowed if the infrastructure was available. Um, if not, then obviously you can't increase density if you don't have the capacity to serve it. So just wanted to make a couple clarifications on Mr. Gearing's specific development. And when we talk about, um, square footage, it actually refers to the lot area.
So there are two different things, Tom. I'm sorry, when you read that on the application, that wasn't talking about the size of the units. It's, it's the overall square footage of the land. In order to calculate the number of units that you get to. So, yeah, I can see your, I can see your question then.
Okay, so, and then, um, I don't know, I'm just kind of shooting this out both of you, so. Just out of curiosity, e- even if you did have to, uh, change something in the redevelopment plan that we approved. I mean, what's the, I suppose, the justification for pushing this through right now?
Well, that's, well, for us, I guess that's a good question too. Well, Alex's concern too is when we get close to, um, ninety percent completion. And let's say that these units were only twenty percent leased up. So that leaves a big void on our performa and, and, uh, uh, a stress on how it's gonna work out. So at that point, if we had this approved already. We would quickly go through the redevelopment, put, uh, a, a plan to the city, uh, permit and go forward with that, with that plan, so. So we thought, let's get that in place now in case we need that as an insurance policy, which is starting to look like we don't. But i- in addition, that it's also in play when we start, you know, phase two, phase three, and phase four, where we can put more apartment units in there.
Okay, with this, just for future reference, I'm not, um, give me one second. So I mean. As far as the area, so not just with Mr. Gearing, but just any development, how does that impact the surrounding area and?
Sure, so this text amendment would apply to the entire BGM zoning district. Um, cause it would amend that entire section, so it wouldn't only affect Mr. Gearing's property, but it would affect any property in the BGM zoning district. Our BGM zoning is unique to Old Town. Generally speaking, it is the Mission Avenue corridor, one block, uh, north, one block south. Does extend up to Washington Park on the north side. So the BGM, it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact citywide. It would only impact the BGM zoning district, which is unique to that corridor.
Okay. So, okay, that's really helpful. So thank you. I appreciate you both.
Oh, absolutely. And if you still have questions at any point, let me know.
I will. Thank you.
Councilwoman Welch, you have a question for?
I do. Um, so you had mentioned that there were other cities that have adopted this, is that what I understand?
That's currently, I think that's, and I'll let Tammy explain that a little better in case I'm wrong, but that's pretty similar to the density requirement they have in Omaha. For their central business districts.
The only reason I was asking that is, um, just, I know you're doing this for an insurance policy, but, you know, once this is done, how likely? Does it actually, do you have to invoke the, I know it's case by case, place by place, but on statistic level. That you have to invoke this in- insurance policy?
Well, the insurance policy is only the, the immediate need. But the, the greater need for this was for phase two, three, four, the other developers, other developments that happened in the BGM district and the frontier district. We need more density than we have right now in order to bring more apartments in there. So I think the better answer and the greater answer is the fact this is gonna affect future developments. So once this is in play, we don't have to go through and, uh, wonder, well, gosh, can we get more density in here compared with Omaha? We have that text amendment, so it's permanently in place for the, for this district.
Um, Councilwoman Welch, when I, um, when this application came in, I researched City of Papillion, La Vista, Sarpy County, and Omaha, just to see. Um, what their regulations were in similar multifamily districts. Papillion and La Vista, outside of those first four units, will let you go up to fifteen hundred, uh, square feet of lot area per unit. Sarpy County was the same. City of Omaha has multiple, multi-family zoning districts. But the most dense that they allow is five hundred square feet of lot area per dwelling unit, so. This text amendment does allow much more density than, uh, Papillion, La Vista, or Sarpy, but it doesn't quite allow as much as Omaha.
Okay, and I believe that the planning commission, uh, uh, recommended approval for, for this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I would just add, when you guys started, um, I think you guys were thinking eighty, ninety units above that main floor, which you found out that.
Couldn't do it.
That wasn't possible, so.
Right.
That kind of took you down to what you could put in there is fifty-three, so. And my guess is if you're investing that kind of money, you want the next building to perform out.
Right.
Um, and that makes it a little bit more feasible to do that, so, and, and for other developers as well, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, public hearing's still open. Is there anyone here to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Any more questions from the council? Okay, third reading will be October fourth, two thousand twenty-two, here at six P M in the council chambers. Item twelve C, ordinance number four, one, zero, nine, request to rezone lot one, Roca de Salvation. Addition being a replat of lots one, two, and three. Block one, Vase Hill Haven addition and the south forty feet of lot three and all of lots four, five, and six. Block two, Vase Hill Haven addition. Together with half of the vacated thirty-seventh street adjacent thereto, from BG and RS seventy-two to RS seventy-two for the purpose of a church. Applicant Fortino Ramirez, general location eight, eight, zero, six, South Thirty-Sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four, one, zero, nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by Article three of ordinance number forty-one, oh, four. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about eighty-eight, oh, six, South Thirty-Sixth Street. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I will open up twelve C for the public hearing. Um, is there anyone here to speak regarding twelve C? Is the applicant in the audience for questions?
I'm here.
Okay, just kind of state your name and address and for the record.
Name is Fortino Ramirez, address twenty-eight, fifty-eight Sprogg Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Um, I'll just give a general intent of what these approvals are asking for. Um, uh, the intent is to construct a new church, uh, together with parking lots and landscaping as, as required. Um, the rezoning is needed, um, because currently where the proposed building is gonna go. It's a mixture of BG lots, general business, and RS seventy-two. So the intent is to combine all the smaller lots into one general RS seventy-two. Um, together with a, a additional use permit to allow for religious worship.
Okay. Thank you. Item twelve C is open for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding twelve C? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding twelve C, please come forward. Yep, just step up to the podium, state your name and address and sign in, please. You're good.
I was on it before and watched myself on TV. It was like, oh my God, it was horrible. But anyway, I live, Mary Riddle.
Okay, thank you.
Eighty-six, ten, South Thirty-Sixth Street. Um, and we just have questions like about, is there gonna be a? Um and we just have questions like about, is there gonna be a turn in, a turnout? You know, where everything's going. Um are they, that's obviously gonna be all cemented. Is there, is the sewer gonna be different? Cause we're on septic. Um traffic on Thirty-Sixth Street needs a traffic study, and I think I sent you a email today. Um Thirty-Sixth Street hasn't had a traffic study in like seventeen years. Um we've lived there uh twenty-one years. And it's, it's getting horrible. I mean, we have the church like catty corner, uh Christian communities across from us. Um and they started having meetings like three, four times a week. And then up on Giles, Childs, they have uh, I think it's Bethany. So the churches, there's a lot of traffic that comes from churches. And I don't mind that. I mean, I go, you know, just stuff like that. It's just right where I think we saw where that turnout was gonna be. On fault, like by Fault Avenue, that's coming up over a peak on Thirty-Sixth Street. And we're having accidents all the time.
Okay.
Just people are going too fast. They're going fast. There's uh, we got all the traffic now from the apartments down below. That's bringing everything through Thirty-Sixth Street. And yes, in the summer, there's not as much traffic cause no schools in. But right now, it's like we're on need for speed or something. We we stand there and we yell at people, slow down. They're just, it's like, what is a big hurry?
So you are a traffic calming device.
I. I'm al- I'm also, I'm also a cat calming device. We have a lot of feral cats. So I throw candy at them out the window when they're fighting. But but yeah, I mean, we're, we're right on Thirty-Sixth Street.
I I think to answer your question real quick, this is a rezoning, this is for rezoning only. So any project they would bring forward and stuff come from the council, but I'm gonna refer that to Tammy.
Yeah, so we we have two items on tonight's agenda that refer to the the church. This is the first piece. Um as uh Mr. Ramirez mentioned, the rezoning in the small subdivision plat would facilitate for one of our later agenda items. Which would be the conditional permit. So I realize these questions are gonna come up. I don't know if you want me to address them now or address them at the next public hearing. I can go ahead and address them now.
When's that gonna be?
Go ahead.
Tonight?
Yeah, it's it's a couple down the agenda, but um I can answer a couple of questions. So are, when these items come in for review, um we have multiple agencies and departments review them. Um Police Department reviewed it, our Public Works Engineers reviewed it, we had Sarpy County Public Works uh review it. Our engineers did not require a traffic study uh for this particular project. Generally speaking, um churches typically don't generate enough traffic them in and of themselves to um, you know, have a need for that. Um if it was a commercial area, if it was a higher density residential, um those typically are a lot larger chip trip generators. Just because you've got more traffic twenty-four seven um versus a church. So a a specific traffic study, specific to this development, was not requested by our engineering department. Um as far as sewer and. One of the things with this project is they would be putting in infrastructure, cause you are correct. Everybody over on Marie Street, Barrett's Drive is on septic. Um up to this point, there has not been infrastructure available to tie into. Um if approved, the church would run sewer um just north of where the Bellevue Community Church is that you referenced. And it would come south down Thirty-Sixth Street. Typically, how the city has handled this is we haven't required people to hook up. Um as long as you have a functioning septic. Uh one of the, you know, disadvantages to that area is everyone has smaller lots. Um if your septic fails, you won't have room, if you can't repair it, you won't have room to put in a new septic system. You won't have room for those laterals and and for that field. So the sewer would be a huge benefit, because then if at such time, you know, if and when that septic fails. It, the infrastructure would be in place where you would be able to hook up to it if you needed it. Um that would be an option for others in the neighborhood too. Our wastewater superintendent has looked at that. Um that would actually be a a positive thing um with this development, because it would finally bring infrastructure to that area. But like I said, in the past, the city has not required folks to hook up in these types of situations. It's been, if your septic fails and you don't have another option to repair it, it would be there and it'd be available to hook up to at that time.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, yeah, it's always been, cause we were at another meeting here about the septic. Um and ours is, you know, working fine. The house is nineteen sixty, so it's been working, you know. Everybody around, I have never seen anybody in our area with an issue. Um but it's always been the infrastructure, like where do you put the pumping station? Cause there's nowhere to.
Basically, the sewer would run through th- uh Thirty-Sixth Street. Um so that's where it would, it would connect. There's a point that it can connect just to the north of where that church is. And the line would run in the right way along Thirty-Sixth Street, so it would be there and it would be available for future use.
Yeah, and then there, you're gonna, are you gonna leave the like elevation of the old base? I always, I'll always say Vase Hill, I even.
Mary, I'm gonna have you address the front, cause we're recording in it. Yeah, we're recording and it's got it.
I'm used to talking.
The audience can't hear you at home, so.
Yeah, I don't know about the elevation and stuff like that. Do they take that down to cement? Do they, I don't, are there gonna be, you know, we're just like, are there gonna be lights? Cause the street heights, we just got.
We don't have a site plan or anything. It's too early.
We do have a site plan. It's on a later um agenda item, and maybe Shirley can pull it up if you go to fourteen A. Surely, it would be attached on.
I have a lot of the neighbors are elderly, so they don't, they get these letters and they're like, you know, what's happening? I don't.
Sure, so and I can have Fortino um speak from an engineering perspective, what they're gonna do with the grade. Um overall, I mean, there's, there's quite a slope that goes down to thirty-six, I think for the most part, otherwise it's fairly flat. Um where they're looking at building. Um Shirley just pulled up the site plan. Thank you, Shirley. Um this kind of shows the proposed layout. Um phase one would be a church and a fellowship hall, phase two at a later date. Um would be classrooms, like Sunday school classrooms, and then like a, you know, a social club or organizational hall. Uh portion to that facility. That would be a later addition if this is approved. Um the existing structures would stay. This is the former site of Vase Hill Haven. I liken it to kind of the Bellevue Berry Farm. Um the Vase family, you know, used to host functions, parties, things of that nature. That's why the commercial zoning has been in place there for decades. Um that's how it was owned under Sarpy County. This uh request would rezone it all to residential. Um that way, that uh commercial zoning would not be there anymore. Um and then the church is asking for a conditional use permit to build the church facility. So under this proposal, it would be all platted into one single lot. Uh rezone to uh RS seventy-two, which is what your existing homes are zoned. And then um they are looking to get approval of that conditional use permit to facilitate construction. So there would be a parking lot facility, the existing house would stay, the existing barn would stay. Um it's my understanding the house will be used as a parsonage um for the pastor. Um and the barn would also just be used for church functions or church activities. Um so those two structures would stay. As far as lighting goes. We require, per the zoning ordinance, that there can't be any light pollution onto adjacent residential properties. Nowadays, with the technology that exists, um pretty much any parking lot lighting you're gonna be, you're gonna put up is gonna be that cutoff, have that cutoff lighting. Um it's not like the old days where it's kind of a spotlight or you have a lot of spillage or pollution. So that's something that we would require as part of the building permit process if this were approved. They would have to have that cutoff lighting so that it couldn't spill over onto the existing residential neighborhood. That is a requirement.
Yeah, yes, we just got streetlights not that long ago. And you could work out in your yard at, you know, through the night. That's how bright it is. I mean, it's just like, wow. We've, it's always been dark, so we don't have sidewalks, nothing like that over there.
And I guess I don't wanna confuse anybody further, so this is ju- this twelve C is just for the.
Yep.
The.
And I'll just send emails if I have questions. Um is, who's our guy?
Who's a council member for twenty?
For that area. I thought, oh, two. Oh.
Pardon me, thank you.
I could hear him.
To answer your question, the west side of Thirty-Sixth Street would be Ward Five.
Okay.
In the new redistricting. And then I believe the east side, uh after the election, would be Councilman McCaw.
Okay.
So we kind of split down the middle. This actual vase property would be in Ward Five that I represent.
Okay.
And I have heard from some of the residents in the area with some concerns.
Right.
Traffic being a major one.
Right.
And I'll talk about that. But to answer your question, it would be two of us, really.
Okay, yeah, I'll uh email.
And right now, he's at large, so he gets everything.
So you're gonna have another chance to come up on fourteen A if you have any more questions.
Okay, yeah.
But I want the council just to stay focused on the rezoning, so we're just, we're getting rid of the BG zoning on this, on this particular item. Which I've always talked in favor of. We gotta protect our BG zoning, but in this case, it's not a good BG site. It's something that was grandfathered in and. The way it's zoned right now, you could put a quick shop there, which that would be a traffic problem, so.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
We still have a lot of deer and everything there. We don't want.
Yeah, so I think, I think the zoning's kind of a, well, we'll find out if it's an easy one.
Explain it to, you know, the elderly neighbors that I check in on and everything. They get the, these letters and they're like, oh, no, you know, so just to try to say, okay, it's, you know, gonna be all right, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to speak regarding twelve C? Please come forward. Anybody else, anybody else wanting to speak regarding twelve C? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I have a question. Mr. Ramirez, when are you looking that um you're going to break ground for your church? Or do you have services there now and then you're just gonna expand?
We'd like to start grading this fall before the winter.
Okay.
And possibly start building next year.
And so you're, are you holding church facilities at that location now or you're at a different location?
No, they, the church group, they currently own a building in North Omaha that they they're using for their church functions. Um this site is, I guess, their future site where they plan to move. So they they do plan to sell their building in North Omaha to be be able to pay for some of these expenses.
So if this is approved, you'll start building in the spring, anticipating to have people at work, you know, coming and going at this church. When? Ballpark?
Two, I mean, if we started the spring, fall.
Okay, so we're looking at least, at least a year if this is.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so I have the public hearing closed. Um so the third reading will be October fourth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M for ordinance number four one zero nine. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction. First reading, we have none this evening. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request a conditional use permit for lot one, Roca de Salvation Salvation Edition. For the purpose of a church, applicant Fortino Ramirez, general location eighty-eight zero six, South Thirty-Sixth Street. And I will open this up for public hearing. And sorry, I lost control on that last item. We probably should have separated that a little better, so. Is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, this is probably a question for you. Will you identify the the exit and entrance? And is there more than one and would you sort of pick it out on that map? And is there a possibility of a future maybe exit and entrance?
So there's two um access points, both along South Thirty-Sixth Street. The existing Vase Street, their existing access point will stay. Um right now, it's more or less kind of a driveway. Um that won't be their main access point, but that will stay. That's on the, that's what you're seeing on the very south end of this site plan. Um then to the north, their main access point is on South Thirty-Sixth Street. Um Mr. Ramirez will tell you, when they first came into um the city, they were looking at putting an access point onto Marie. Um Public Works and Planning did not want that. Um we felt like that would be too intrusive to the neighborhood, so we wanted them to take access from Thirty-Sixth Street. So um I I guess as far as future access. You know, Marie Street is there, but it would be my recommendation that they don't ever take access from Marie Street, that they only take access from South Thirty-Sixth Street. Um there was previously a South Thirty-seventh Street um that ran north and south. That was uh vacated a few months ago by city council. It was an unimproved street. It's basically just a grass area. So um that street is now vacated. And what you have to the south and to the west of this property is all owned by OPPD, OPPD. Cause you have the substation to the south, and then OPPD also owns the property to the west.
And then what type of barrier would there have to be? Like, I know there's one residence there, but maybe to the west of that could be developed someday too.
Um with OPPD owning it, it's probably unlikely that there's gonna be any development. Obviously, they're hanging on to it because they don't want the development. Um you know, they're probably hanging on to it for future expansion of the substation or to have their own buffer. Um so probably unlikely that we're gonna see anything that happens to the west.
Okay, and Mr. Ramirez, I just have one question. I don't know how big the congregation is today. Uh I think you referred to an address up on north, forty-seven hundred North Twenty-Fourth Street. I don't know how big that congregation is today, but wh- what is, and I don't. What what do you think their their future is? Where where do you think they'll be in five years and ten years? Are we looking at a church with three thousand people in it, or are we looking at a church with, you know, a hundred people on a Sunday?
You know what's that? That would be a better question for the pastor.
Okay.
You know, but I I will say that the main assembly hall is designed with three hundred seats.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was gonna say. So the main assembly hall will seat three hundred and twenty-four people. So under this plan, they wouldn't be able to have more than three hundred and twenty-four people in that.
Okay, and that also plays into parking stalls.
Correct, building code, yes, correct, yep.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Presser.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh the issues of of traffic are of concern. Mr. Ramirez, if I could, please, it looks like you're on the other side of Omaha. And you're coming through Omaha all the way down south to Bellevue. I'm assuming that all the congregation will be going to the north and going through Chandler Road and Harrison. Or at least Chandler Road, cause there's not much access. So Chandler and that area on Thirty-Sixth Street is already not good. It's not as bad on Sunday, but and Harrison is also a very congested intersection. So I'm thinking we're not really improving the road any, which is part of what I'm hearing from people in the area. Can you help me understand what you're envisioning for traffic flow and pattern and usage? Uh not only, and I I don't know, I shouldn't assume it's a Sunday morning service. But times of service and weekday activities, cause you've got an event center, you've got a barn, you've got other things. So realistically, what are you anticipating for traffic in the area and which direction? Cause if you go further south, we open up on Thirty-Sixth Street, at least at Cornhusker. We have turning lanes, we have multiples, but we don't have that over on Chandler Road.
I agree with you. The the way I envisioned it was the the fastest access to the site, which is coming down seventy-five. Then uh what is it, Chan- not Chandler?
Chandler Road.
Cornhusker, then uh north on Thirty-six. That would be the, you know, if we're coming in from Omaha, that would be the quickest way. Um traffic wise, you know, when they designed the street, you know, and they made this lot of BG, you know, that that had. To been part of that design or that capacity for that street. Um part, part of the the traffic, I guess, design and and study we did was uh install a new driveway. Uh for ease of access and to allow a little bit of queue for a left turn into the the new site. Um but yeah, um you would expect um a regular Christian church uh type of schedule, which would be Sundays. Um then miscellaneous small activities during the week. I I don't know, I don't know if that's enough information.
Well, I'm not sure of what the regular activities would be during the week other than, and I don't know if it's one or two or three Sunday services, but you mentioned the, the pastor is, is that, uh, Mr. Garcia or the Garcias? I think they're.
Ottoniel Garcia.
So he, he's the pastor?
Yes.
Okay, and he's the pastor at the current church then now, too? So he would be a better one to answer those questions?
About, uh, yeah, about activities, yes. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's his, his church, yes.
Maybe he could contact me or us, or you could find out the information. So we have a little better sense of the traffic patterns with it.
Yes, uh, yes, uh, of course. Uh, but yeah, generally, uh, you, you expect the, the masses or the, the majority of the traffic to be on a Sunday, for Sunday church.
Okay, and the church in, in North Omaha then is one of, it, is there more than one church? Or is that the only church? Is there a food pantry or something? Are there other amenities or other parts of the congregation and the, uh?
Yeah, so it's, it's not like a cult or anything. It's, it's another, say, like another Catholic church. You know, there's multiple Iglesias de Pentecostes throughout the city. So this is just, uh, just one more church of that, I guess, congregation, you could say, led under this pastor.
Okay.
And, and really the reason why they're moving down here is because they don't fit in their North Omaha church anymore. That's really the problem. They, they, they bought a small building years ago and they've gotten to a point where they just don't fit anymore. So that's why they ventured out into, uh, building something that would fit their needs.
The one I saw online looked like a pretty large stone church. I'm surprised. What's the capacity of that one?
I would say around like a hundred, a hundred and fifty people.
Really?
Max, yes, from, you know, it looks larger from the outside. Once you're inside, just the way it's broken out, uh, between like the main assembly hall, the different rooms for classrooms that they use for the children, um, it's, it's smaller.
Okay, and people are willing to drive clear across town?
That's their plan, yeah.
Okay, that area has probably nine churches along in there. I'm surprised that it's such a popular church area.
That's true, it is church streets.
Councilman Prester. Um, one thing I would point out is currently the majority of the property is on BG, general business. Um, so as a permitted use now, you could have somebody come in and do a twenty-four hour convenience store, a restaurant with a drive-through. You could have retail sales, you know, you could have a Walmart market type setup. Um, and we wouldn't be able to control that, because it would be allowed as a permitted use. So the one, the one way we look at it with traffic is, um, if this is rezoned and the use of a church is a much less intense use, um, for the property than how it's currently zoned. Or you could have, you know, it could go back to what it was previously used for, where you could have, you know, the Vase Hill Haven, or you could have large social events, you know, all, all of that traffic as well. So, um, the staff kind of views this as a much less dense use, even though it's still gonna generate a fair amount of traffic. It's gonna be less impactful than what it could be under the current zoning.
Okay, I appreciate that information. It does look like to me, as I first looked at it especially, we kind of go against our normal planning guidelines or our public works guidelines in keeping streets and connections to streets straight, where that would be Marie and we would exit onto Marie and then out into Thirty-Sixth Street. But that would be much more disruptive to the neighbors, so, and apparently that was considered. And I'm not trying to go back there, because there's enough people already with questions. But the way this is coming out, I know we had a fire truck that hit somebody in that, I think about three years ago, and it was pretty serious. But with the fire trucks going through there and the amount of traffic on, up on that hill, uh, I don't see any concerns listed from Public Works or anything that came out at the Planning Commission. You wanna comment on anything else on traffic there?
Yeah, I mean, there, there have been concerns with site distance. I understand that. Um, again, police department, fire department, our public works engineers all reviewed this. Um, all found this access to be acceptable. So, I mean, it did go through that preliminary and that, that intensive staff review.
Okay, thank you.
So Tammy, um, I know there's no engineering being done on it now, but Thirty-Sixth Street from Three Seventy to Cornhusker, we're working on the engineering portion of that.
Correct.
I mean, it's certainly my vision and hopefully the council agrees to take Thirty-Sixth Street onto Harrison Street as the next one. So has, does this, how's this plan fit into an expansion?
And we kind of talked about that at Planning Commission. So right now, the construction focus is on South Thirty-Sixth Street. The design focus has moved to, um, Thirty-sixth between Three Seventy and Cornhusker. So naturally, the third phase of that would be Cornhusker Road, or sorry, uh, yes, Cornhusker Road North. Um, it's something that hasn't been talked about a lot, but it, it is in our minds when we look at these types of applications. Um, that will definitely be the next area of Thirty-Sixth Street that we look at. So I would assume that, you know, in the near future, that would also be under design as well.
And this plan doesn't do anything to obstruct?
No, um, both Public Works and Planning, like I said, it, I, I realize that it is going to, it is going to generate traffic, but it's a lot less traffic than under the current commercial zoning. Um, and typically in the engineering world, churches aren't looked at as being, you know, huge sources of, you know, having impactful traffic. Yes, it's going to be busy, um, obviously, when they have their services. And I think it was discussed, services primarily, um, Sundays, potentially Saturday nights. Um, you know, you might have some Wednesday night activity as well, but the rest of the time, it would potentially be fairly quiet.
Good, thank you. Public hearing is still open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on fourteen A? Please come forward.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Ramirez. I know we're at, not at the site plan phase, but, uh, one of the letters that, uh, was shared with the council was concerning a, some type of landscaping buffer between the new church and Marie Street. Can you speak to that, just so we, uh, if this individual can't make it because he has COVID, can, uh, hear what you're thinking?
Oh, of course, um, so between the church or the proposed site plan and Marie Street and Thirty-Sixth Streets, um, we just follow, you know, zoning ordinance guidelines. Uh, forty-foot space between trees, uh, some type of ornamental to beautify the streets and, you know, the, the improvement. Um, up against the, our neighbor to the west, um, we, yes, we only have one, yeah, our neighbor to the west is O P P D, but neighbor to the northwest, we have a residential home. And we sat down with them and we, we talked about, you know, what would be an appropriate type of screen, you know, between our development and their existing home. And going back and forth, uh, we agreed that, uh, a windbreaker type of, uh, screen would, would be acceptable, uh, which would be done, um, uh, planting evergreen trees, uh, up, you know, one after another, to create sort of a screen where you couldn't, um, get, uh, car lights or, or really see anything across them. So that, that is our intent, to create a windbreaker type of screen between the new developments and their residential home.
Mr. Casey, um, I did have some email conversations with Mr. Dan Reha. He was the gentleman who could not be here tonight. He was present at Planning Commission. Um, we are at site plan approval phase, so one of the items in the packet is a landscaping plan. Um, Shirley, would you be able to pull up that landscaping plan for me? Sorry, should be one of the next ones. Should be the next. There we go. Um, so the area that Mr. Ramirez was referring to, uh, Mr. Reha lives, um, along that northwestern corner. That's why all of those large evergreen trees are shown. Um, I gave the landscape plan, I emailed it to Mr. Reha today. He looked at it, uh, Mr. Ramirez is correct, um, they did discuss it. Now he feels like instead of all the trees, he would potentially rather see some shrubbery in there as well. Um, if that's something that the City Council wants me to look into between now, um, and when this item is approved over the next couple of weeks, I can work with Mr. Ramirez, I can work with Mr. Reha, and we can, we can do some slight amendments to this plan.
I, I would just say it sounds like, uh, that you're interested in being good neighbors with the neighbors and, uh, so as long as that's working, uh, to the benefit of both.
Yeah, it's, this is for the long run. We were not trying, I mean, it's a church. It's not a commercial development that's gonna go in, they're gonna get out, no. These guys are gonna stay there for the long run. And yeah, it's to everybody's benefits that, that this goes in correctly.
Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up with Councilman Casey's landscaping, the one neighbor would be most directly impacted with the buffer. But I see the parking lot on the far north side, and it's fairly close to Marie Street and to the neighbors across the street. Is there going to be a similar kind of prevention of all the streetlights for any night services or things? Something along that area for those folks?
So right now, what we're showing is, I guess, ornamental trees and small bushes. Um, but we, we can definitely amend a- as needed to provide that type of screening.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there is no problem against that, though, you know. If, if, if there's something that's seen that we can do better, you know, let's bring it up.
All right, and that's what I think some of the neighbors are asking about or wondering about. So I appreciate that you're being cooperative with them and meeting with them and trying to work things out. Thank you.
Does council have any more questions for anybody in the audience before I close the public hearing? Okay, any? Yep, and, uh, it is still open, so you can come forward. Yep.
How long has Thirty-seventh Street been va- vacated?
Doug helped me out on this. Was it probably four or five months ago, maybe fourteen?
Have my plot planned from two thousand?
It was just real recently that it was done.
Oh, yeah, because it says on here, we own half of vacated Thirty-seventh Street.
This could be a, a different section of Thirty-seventh Street.
The other half.
Yeah, this is, there, there was some to the north and there was some to the south of Marie. So the, I'm talking about the section to the south of Marie. That was just recently done within, within the last four or five months.
Oh, okay, because I'm like, what, we've been vac- yeah.
Yeah, on the north side, I think it's probably been vacated for quite some time, just because of the development that's been there.
Okay.
So you're exactly right, um, your plot plan is correct. You own half of that vacated street.
Okay, yeah, yeah, like that whole area within, they all have.
And Thirty-seventh Street didn't line up.
Oh.
It was, on the north side, it was, it was closer to Thirty-Sixth Street. On the south side of Marie, it was farther to the west.
Okay, okay. And I, I mean, the one concern about traffic is you're gonna have four, four churches. Some have service on Saturdays, some on Sundays. You're gonna have them all letting out at the same time. That's, and they're all in a close proximity. I mean, we don't mind a church there, you know, because everybody needs the big man. But it's, uh, yeah, getting that traffic, it just, more and more, it just makes all of us around there a little bit more nervous.
Mary, would you state your name and address again for the record, so the clerk can follow it in the recordings?
Rydell, R Y D L.
Thank you.
That's it, thanks again.
Anyone else wanting to speak before I close the public hearing? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing for fourteen A. And, uh, do I have a motion as, uh, according to the, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Since this ties in with twelve C and we're gonna vote on, or vote on twelve C at our last, next meeting, I'd like to make a motion that we continue fourteen A to October fourth, two thousand twenty-two's meeting to be considered at the same time that we vote on ordinance number forty-one zero nine.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Prester, to continue fourteen A until the October fourth, two thousand twenty-two meeting to be considered, uh, same time as vote as ordinance number four one zero nine. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B, request for a conditional use permit for Lot One, Tiller's Fifth Edition, for the purpose of auto sales. Applicant Legion LED Trucks LLC, location sixteen twenty Wilshire Drive. And I will open fif- fourteen B up for the public hearing. If there's anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. See the applicant, do you? If you're here for questions or do you wanna state anything?
Uh, here for questions. So Jerry Teeter, uh, sixteen twenty Wilshire Drive, uh, I'm the building owner and the business owner. And so I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thanks for your patience. Sometimes it runs a little long.
Sure.
Uh, public hearing is open for fourteen B. Is there anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward. Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, we're gonna be here late, no. Just a couple of quick questions. I know that when I read the public, or the Planning Commission, you're referring to ten parking spots. And it would be simply for the designated, designated spots on your lot.
Correct.
There, there'll be no, um, storage, no mechanical work on? They're there for you to, I'm assuming you have an office in your building or somehow you meet people there and they're being displayed for sale or for lease?
Correct, um, we do have a indoor storage facility at a different locations, uh, in, um, La Vista now. And so any storage of our trucks takes place there, uh, for the purpose of this, uh, for the sales permit.
It is a fairly large lot.
Yeah.
But you're just looking at specific to the north, I'd say the northeast corner?
Right, the, the state of Nebraska has one set of requirements for any dealer's license. There's no stipulation, if you're internet sales or traditional car lot, it's a one-size-fits-all. And so part of those requirements is that you have a minimum of ten spots, uh, to get the license. And so, um, it's not our intent to have any, a traditional car lot there or anything. It's just for the purpose of continuing to do business the way we're doing it now. Um, I'm at the point where I'm selling enough of these trucks to where the state's requiring I have this dealer's license.
And you, you're not gonna be open like set hours? You're just pretty much gonna meet people there to show them?
Yeah, everything, it's a one-to-one transaction. So, um, we just do the paperwork in our office and then, and that's really what takes place there.
All right, thank you.
And I've been operating this way for a year now in that address. It's just worth the point now to where we need this license.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Teeter? Okay, um, public hearing is still open. Anyone else wanting to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion, we approve fourteen B.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fif- let's see, item sixteen C, recommend approval of the agreement with Lockton LLC for the administration of the Employee Wellness Program for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three at an annual cost of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move we, I move we approve item sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, recommend approval of the property casualty insurance with Travelers Midwest Casualty Employers and Chubb for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three with a total premium package of six hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with Trigaran for the purpose of providing for the maintenance of the plantings in the public areas within city right-ofways in the Trigaran subdivision, formerly S I D one seventy-one. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns. Councilman Burns?
I move we approve item sixteen E.
Motion by Burns, second by Prester. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, recommend approval of the additional purchase cost to the original contract with Cornhusker International Trucks, Inc. in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Looking for a motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen is the administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly report is given first council meeting of each month. September report will be attached to the October fourth council packet. Seventeen A, update from city administrator on Sarpy County Museum. Is that just going on the record? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask, I I know there's pictures atta- attached to our agenda, I don't know if Shirley or Susan could bring those up, but I like.
I think we missed sixteen H.
I don't have a sixteen H.
There is.
Oh, good catch, Shirley. Um, so let's back up, hold seventeen for a minute, we'll go back to sixteen H, which was right before this. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the addendum to the original contract with Burl Enterprises LLC, increasing the original contract for the two thousand twenty-two concrete project in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Remember reading it, but it didn't make our tonight's agenda. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen H. Good catch.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCall. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now back to seventeen A. Councilman Cook, did you have a question?
I was just gonna say it's uh, you know, for Mr. Risto to talk about the museum and I noticed going through the agenda, there were several pictures attached, and I'd like to maybe see if we could speak to those individually or at least as a group by Mr. Risto.
So you want to start out with the three deck pictures? So one of the discussions we had at the last council meeting was, I'm sorry, it's on, the condition of the depot as well as the deck and the the safety issues we had with the decking and then what was going on on the inside of the depot. Pictures are worth a thousand word or thousand words, so we thought we'd share this with you to kind of eliminate any misrepresentation or innuendos that we're mistreating the the museum. We just wanted the end result to be that decking fixed and the depot cleaned up. So if you want to kind of run through these, you guys may or may not have seen them, but as you look inside the depot, we had talked about a lot of items that were in there for garage sale and it was pa- it, you couldn't use it for tours. Our guys couldn't access the electrical panels, literally had to climb over stuff to get in. Truly a hazard within, so thus started the discussion with the museum to please clean that up ultimately with the demand to clean it up or else. We never wanted to get there, but as you can see, this is what we were faced with. So the depot was never being used for what it was intended to. In the end, um, they cleaned that up, they repaired their decking, and we're back to business. But you can see, it's just it's, it looks like a hoarder's nightmare inside of there. Our intent was only to get get through that. Did you get through all those, Phil? So just for the record, so it's not as, uh, it it looks much more extreme when you see the pictures, so we wanted to make sure that you did see that, kind of close the chapter on they've done what they were asked to do. Um, we're well past that and we're moving forward, but this is kind of what our guys are faced with, so.
Pictures make a difference. Councilman Burns?
So just a couple of things, because I think in context, um, I think as far as the train depot goes. Um, I do know Ben Justman has made very clear that um, he recognizes that there were stuff put in there, and that's for their annual yard sale. That's their main fundraising event. Um, so the pandemic hit, yes, he was collecting items. Um, most of his uh, volunteers who do tours um, are elderly and most who help to host that event are elderly. So in the midst of a pandemic, uh, that was really their only resort, so I'm not uh, sure that it was like that for, uh, you know, an extended amount of time, uh, to, um, I don't think it's really fair that we kind of keep doing this back and forth, especially when Ben's not actually here to defend himself or to give any clarification or justification or to talk to it. Um, and then three, truly, I think the fact of just putting the photos on here and and making this point, I don't know why we're really slamming a community organization. I don't think these photos really justify justify a letter saying you have ninety days to vacate the train depot from the premises. Um, to do that to him, I think is, uh, it's, I don't, uh, this isn't justifiable. I'll tell you the truth, this is actually really embarrassing for our city.
It is, with the depot being positioned like that, it was embarrassing. And it wasn't just a ninety-day letter. This had gone on for the better part of a year, am I correct, Doug? Multiple requests, it had nothing to do with the pandemic, it was this, the depot could not be used for a tour as it was originally designed for, so multiple requests went out there. It's real easy on the back end to say that we're treating them unfairly, and that's why we wanted to share what was happening in there. And the decking had nothing to do with the pandemic, it was a safety issue. So we had to address that as well as the interior. Kathy, you've worked extensively with this too, and I think you know where we're at.
Yeah, and I'd like to address that. One of the reasons I um, became the liaison for this was because I felt that there was some breakdown in communication between the museum and the city. So I said, let me get in the middle of this and um, so that, and there was some confusion as to who was responsible for what, at what time. And I believe that that letter went out to say, we need to get your attention to get this thing cleaned up, which they did. And nothing, and I don't know why we continue to bring this up, because it's it it's in the past and in the history, and I feel like because of being the the liaison, there's a great, better working relationship between the museum and the city. In addition, they have stepped up, they have a golf outing coming up uh, next month for, that's their major fundraiser. They've also hired a company to help them with fundraising, because you know, these are people that are um, more involved in history and 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 maintaining the integrity of that. They're not always the best people at raising money and and doing those, they're about preserving what we've got. So there's people on board with their board, and I attend their board meeting once a month just to see if there's any questions, any concerns that they have with the city. I meet with uh, Mr. Risto about is there any concerns that he has with regards to the museum so that we keep everything on track and this type of thing never happens again.
And to add to that, quite frankly, this thing was put to bed months ago, but it keeps rearing its ugly head. Somebody will make a comment out there that the city's picking on the museum, and we were done with this. But what wasn't apparent to everybody uh, is the condition that was in there.
Well, and and also, Jim, it was the clarification of, you know, we gave you ninety days to clean it up, which, you know, you do when you have um, people that aren't holding up to their the contract, they cleaned it up. So it becomes a moot point. They did what they were expected to do and we're hoping that because of being the liaison, that never happens again, that we have to resort to that type of thing. And there's, again, great communication between both entities to make sure that everyone stays on track and the Sarpy County Museum is um, uh, well, you know, well thought of and there's and there's no issues at no misunderstandings, no miscommunications between the city and that entity.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Welch, I know you're absent at the last uh, meetings. And I know uh, Councilman Burns brought it up that uh, they were still confused as to if they had to get out of there, is that, do you see any confusion?
No, they are not confused whatsoever, because they brought it to my attention, and I com- contacted Mr. Risto immediately, and a letter was given to them, and at the last board meeting, they even had it in their meeting minutes that that was given to them, and they sighed a big sigh of relief because they didn't know that once you cleaned it up, are we, you know, are we, are we good? And so we clarified that to say, no, you don't have to move it, no, you don't have to do anything. And then we're working through the leases that were written, because they are, you know, we're working to make sure there's no misunderstandings between who does what with regards to the city and the museum. Who takes care of what between the city and the museum?
So everybody has clear understanding.
They're ve- they're very clear, they're very clear.
To go forward.
And if they have any, you know, they they have the working relationship, I feel, with me, cellphone, email. If they have any concerns whatsoever, they're reaching out to me. And um, you know, I even saw them publicly at a rescheduled national night out, and there was no concerns whatsoever.
Well, they can rest assured that my family's been here since the late eighteen hundreds and uh, I I am a advocate for the history of our city.
Well, and it was also recommended that we um, have a position within the city council that there's always, as long as it stays in the city of Bellevue, there there always is a liaison on the city council that is between the city and the Sarpy County Museum, no matter what.
All right, thank you. One more item uh, regarding, um, this is covered under administrative uh, uh, reports regarding our budget, but I just wanted to read in to the record, and we'll make this public. But it's just an explanation, the county sent out a uh, notice to all taxpayers in the county that their taxes went up, it made it kind of sound, I mean, if you read it, it didn't sound that way, but it kind of looked like the levies, the cities were raising their levies. That's not the case, so I'm just gonna read this uh, uh, description into the record, so um, people have better understanding of it. So city of Bellevue property owners received a postcard, notice a proposed tax increase. The postcard shows the two thousand twenty-one assessed value and the two thousand twenty-two assessed value along with the respective years, taxes and the increase. The postcard also identifies the hearing associated with the political subdivision. Bellevue's hearing will be this Thursday, September twenty-second at six oh five PM at Papillion La Vista South High School. The reason for the hearing is that in an effort to highlight and potentially reduce property taxes, the state legislature passed LB six forty-four that created an allowable growth percentage increase and defined real growth increases differently than total assessed increases. Bellevue has been consistently applying a point six one tax levy rate to total evaluate, to total valuation since two thousand fourteen. That tax levy rate has not increased. Bellevue's total two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget is one hundred and nine million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and four cents, an increase of only one point seven percent. The city of Bellevue was able to hold to only a one point seven increase despite average inflation rates of eight point three percent. Your valuation, which is determined by the Sarpy County Assessor, may have increased and therefore the taxes you pay may have increased. No argument. If your valuation increased, you are paying more tax in absolute dollars, but not a higher percentage. Bellevue's two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three property tax request is thirty million two hundred and nine ninety thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and three cents. The levy tax rate of point six one per hundred dollars of total valuation is four point nine six billion dollars, which means valuations in Bellevue increased on an average of eight point seven percent. Unfortunately, property taxes are the only controllable variable from which to cover costs, and the city council has voted not to increase the levy tax rate of point oh six one. And the correct reading is point oh six one on that, correct? Yes, so, okay, to be within the LB six forty-four limit, Bellevue's tax request would need to be reduced by one point four million dollars, limiting the request to an increase of three point seven four percent, Bellevue's allowable growth percentage increase. For two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, personnel costs will be approximately thirty-nine percent of total expenditures. Personnel costs would need to be the prime consideration for cuts if taxes were reduced. Bellevue prides itself on strong public safety, and that is a large portion of the personnel cost within the city. These costs have already been significantly reduced by over one point five million dollars. Additionally, the city has cut capital project request by ten million dollars to get to this point. However, the city cannot cut bond payments and is not advisable to cut sewer or gar- garbage operations for our taxpayers. The administration has some growth initiatives that should reap benefits in the next year or two and reduce the pressure on property taxes. So we'll make that public, Phil, on the site. And we'll add that to the record of the administrative reports as well, so. Any other questions? All right, we'll file those. There is no closed session. Oh, Councilman Prester?
Mayor, just for awareness, it might, or somebody might comment about the, from that letter, we have to add an additional meeting, and that's why we're having a special meeting for our budget. So we didn't vote on it tonight or have it before us, and it just, since it's related, you might mention that.
And that special meeting will be at uh, four thirty this Friday, September twenty-third. Here in the council chambers. So, if anybody wants to attend in the public. Thanks for bringing that up. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Please vote.